It is Monday, May twenty first, twenty eighteen, six P. M. Time to call the Garden City Council Meeting in order. This time I'll ask everyone to stand and Councilmember Bruce is gonna leave this in our invocation, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come this afternoon in the most ominous manner that we know how. Father God, thanking you for all things, for last night, July hours to late hours, morning you allow us to rise, you took it through the day through day just seen and day just unseen and brought us out to the city this afternoon to take care of your business. Father God, I pray that we all can speak on one accord, that we can agree to disagree on all things. His blessings are blessings with in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time Jennifer Shaw is gonna call the roll, please. Here.
Mayor Batum.
Here.
Betsy Kicklider. Bruce Campbell.
Here.
Rosetta Cody.
Here.
Kim Teis.
Here.
Marcia Daniel.
Here.
Debbie Ruiz.
Thank you. At this time we're gonna open up our meeting for anyone that wants to come forward and speak for three minutes, anyone wanting to come forward and speak for three minutes. Seeing no movement, we don't have any official requests to speak before council, so we're going into our public hearings. PC one eight one four rezoning request, receipt of public comment on request by Jay Moffin representing Sam Spencer, property owner to rezone two sixty-six Alfred Street from C two A to I two for truck tire repair use. This time I'll ask Ron Alexander to come up and give us an overview on that, please.
Mayor, council.
Peter.
Moffin Engineering brought the case before the Planning Commission at the April hearing. The case is to hear a request to rezone the property from its C two A present zoning to an I two zone district for further use as a heavy truck tire repair business. SOS Tire is located in off Kicklider Way there and their property is adjacent to this piece here. They're looking to expand their operation over into this property and expand SOS Tire as a primarily truck tire repair business. I would imagine there'd be some other minor repair type things going on, but there hasn't been any talk of anything beyond that.
It was listed as an I two, but it was not approved by that in the planning and zoning, is that correct?
That's correct. Discussion with them, they decided to send in writing and request that it was downgraded from I two to an I one zone.
But even with an I one zone, containers could be parked over there, correct?
They can be parked there, they just can't be stacked.
Council, have any other questions? Ron? Thank you, Ron.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah.
Are they gonna have an access driveway onto Alfred Street?
It's my understanding they're gonna have a access and an enter or exit from Alfred Street. Their intentions is to kinda create a loop to come in from the Kicklider Way and exit through the Alfred Street.
Okay. Have you seen the plan on that driveway configuration?
I have.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ron. This time I'd like to ask anyone who would wanna come forward and speak in favor of the rezoning request to come up at this time. You would state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Sam Spencer. I live at one oh six East Fifty-Sixth Street, proud owner of SOS Tire. Our third generation company that's been in business close to forty-four years, currently forty-five employees. We are a Michelin commercial tire dealership and in our industry, as we know and being proud inhabitants of Garden City, it's growing right now and much of what our industry is growing is about services. And so trying to not only equip the trucks that are running in and out of the port, but keep them healthily maintained, their engines, A.C. systems particular at this time of year, things of that nature. So in that light, we are excited to expand and this expansion is a, the plans are for a twenty thousand square foot building, sixteen bay, which is in essence about three times as large as we are currently. If you happen to come by, you'll see that our, we're baylocked right now. We're growing, we need more space. So this plot of land came available and it's exciting to make plans grow. This growth will entail probably employing anywhere from ten to fifteen more employees, but something that we're all excited about and wanna do it, but do it right. So, open for any questions, if anybody has any questions about what is the intended use. I know containers are a big issue in Garden City, that's an area we don't, we're not interested in, storing containers, stacking containers, nothing of the sort. I think on the properties right now, we've got a container that's filled with some tires, but as the owner, it's something I'm not excited by because those aren't being sold. So I wanna keep things moving. It's a lot that will be developed and the vehicles that will be being worked on need to have a flow. If something is static on that lot, it's not effectively being worked on, so that's not the intent whatsoever. No storage. We've never stored anything, taken any money for storing anything, that's not our core business whatsoever.
Well, couple of comments and a couple of questions. It's not that we are opposed to containers, we just like to keep the container yards somewhat out of the public eye and off of some of our main streets. But container business and container storage is very important to Garden City because they produce a lot of tax revenue for us, so it's not that we're against them, we just wanna keep them in areas where we don't have to see them as much. Now, one of the concerns that I have is once we change it to I one, then it could have container storage at that location despite, you know, what you're saying here, once we change the zoning, that's the way it is. So, I guess a couple of comments, you, there's a number of trailer chassis stored over there now as it is, will those be removed?
Yes, those would have nothing to do with the concept going forward. Having that land sit stagnant for like it's been for six months, or I've owned it for probably twelve months. There's so many customers we take care of and service, those frankly snuck on the yard on me. I know exactly who the customer is and an outside, one of my outside sales guys said it was okay, but it's not what we're about, I'm not charging them to be there and I've asked them twice now to remove them, so. That's something that would not exist there unless we're actively working on them.
So the only vehicles that'll be, there'll be vehicles that you're actually working on?
Yes.
And I can, I think I can see where your business has grown because there's a lot of buses and all different kind of vehicles stored there now and I assume that you're working on some of those now.
We are, absolutely. But we don't store or take money for storing, so if something sits there stagnant, it's a constant, something we discuss on a daily basis and it's doing nobody favors if it's just sitting there stagnant. And this, the develop, the building we're making, intend to build on this property is gonna take out a large portion of that property, so parking will be a premium.
So the twelve bays will be bays where you're actually working on vehicles?
Yeah, so there's gonna be sixteen drive-through bays along with a fifteen-foot eve overhang on both sides of the two hundred-foot length building. So that's giving six thousand more square foot of working space for trucks that can nose in, not totally be in the shop.
Mm-hmm.
Really excited for you guys to see the plans, it's a beautiful building. West Construction Company is gonna build it, a brick facade facing Alfred Street. One who, my father-in-law who I bought the business from, when I was asking him questions about, you know, how to approach this, he's, don't underbuild this, build this right, this is your chance, so that's the excitement I have is, wanna build it and build it right, so.
Well, I've seen the rendition of the building, looks like a nice building. And Ron, I assume all his site plans will have to come back for you to be approved, all the landscaping also?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks for the work, submitted the plans. We took it under review, pending, we're gonna change it, depending on the seller on, so there's some requirements.
Okay. Council, have any questions, Senator?
I'm just trying to visualize, is this mainly just bobtails or will they be able to bring trailers in just to have the tire repairs? Is it, you're working in the sixteen bay, is it?
Yeah, so the strategy would be more working on trucks, so a lot of suspension work. We currently do kingpins, so we do a lot of brake work, we'll have an oil pit to service trucks with oil exchange and have an alignment pit, but we'll also have some technicians employed that are master techs that'll be able to do some engine work. We're not like a branded dealership, so we won't be doing warranty campaigns or things of that nature because we're an independent shop. So we're gonna be doing things on, the advertise, or the marketing idea behind this is when somebody calls to get their truck worked on, it's about time, we can look at the trucks in a timely fashion, not saying things like, we'll get to you next week or something like that. Yeah, trying to move the work through the shop quickly.
Any other questions?
I've got a question.
Ron.
Sam, you said that you're third generation, have you been at that location the entire existence of the business?
The original building was what was called the Old Traffic Circle, which is a red brick building which a woodworking company, I'm forgetting the name of, bought. We moved over to, used to be called Twin Circle Pine, I believe? We moved there in nineteen ninety-nine and built the original building, which is directly on the cul-de-sac. Since we started growing then, then we built the building behind it, which is basically at the end of the cul-de-sac. And so what we're trying to do now is expand into, you know, we've built a driveway to go to all the way to Alfred Street. So it is in essence a loop coming in off of eighty onto Kicklider, through our properties to if it is a truck getting that kind of work done at that last building and then they could exit on Alfred Street.
So you've got a big investment there already, this is simply expanding that investment?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would wanna come forward and speak opposed? While I fail to open this public hearing, I will close it officially at this time, closing this meeting. We have PC eighteen fifteen rezoning request, receipt of public comment on request by Continental Heavy Civil Corporation to rezone four thirty-three Telfair Road from R two to I two, zero Telfair Road, pin number six zero seven three seven zero one zero zero four A from R A to I two, zero Telfair Place, pin number six zero seven three seven zero one zero one four from P I two to I two, and zero Telfair Place, pin number six zero seven three seven zero one zero zero six from R two to I two for office use, storage of materials, and metal fabrication. This time I'll open up this public hearing, I'll ask Ron Alexander to come forward, please.
This case also came before the Planning Commission at the April hearing. Heavy Corp does a lot of work for the ports and I think it's mainly fabrication, they do a lot of equipment storage, that kinda stuff. And they are, they have an existing property over at, on Telfair Road, which is a couple of lots down from this parcel, and they wanna expand their business into these parcels to, for storage purposes. And then later on, I think they plan on building buildings and expanding their business there. This is some of the last remaining residential properties in the area there. I think there's maybe one left that, from what I understand, these people are already talking about, they're looking at that one as well. And that would bring everything in the area into an I two zone.
Okay. Council, have any questions? Thank you, Ron. This time I'm gonna ask anyone who wants to come forward and speak in favor of the rezoning request. You would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ryan Purvis, I'm a representative for Continental Heavy Civil. We're a company that has been in Savannah for about nine months, locally at five twenty-five, and fortunately for us, we've had the opportunity to work for the Georgia Ports Authority and recently won more work. And so the purpose of us purchasing this new parcel is to expand the work that we already have going on. And so as mentioned in your description, we would be using the site for a lay-down yard, both for materials and equipment with the future opportunity to do some metal fabrications as well, but it's in support of several projects that we've recently won for the GPA.
Okay, thank you. Council, have any questions? Thank you so much.
I've got a question, yeah. As we can see in this image, there's a lot of green out there, and if you're gonna build a lay-down yard, you're gonna start laying down either asphalt or concrete or possibly gravel. This area is probably the most studied area in the city on drainage. Has Ron Alexander talked to y'all about that?
Yes, sir, and the fortunate thing is, you go over two blocks to the west, that's the current property that we have, and so we've been in the process of mitigating the stormwater issues. We've got a, we built a trench along the side of that property as well and had an engineer design all the stormwater provisions that we needed. So we're well aware of what will be needed for that property as well to make it usable.
Yes, the building in the image there that has the kinda tan roof.
To the right?
Yeah, to the, going up towards the big warehouse from your site. They are perpetually flooding from water that runs along Telfair Road in the ditch that goes in front of their property. So what I'm gonna be talking with Ron Alexander about is the opportunity to deal with some of this, both your property and then the stuff along the road can be handled now. We may ask you guys, we will ask you guys, to assist us in getting, and making sure that that guy on the brown roof there stays dry. Are you, did I understand you guys might be looking to acquire in that direction as well?
We are, we're in the early discussion with that, but that's not final yet, so.
You need to get that property.
We agree.
Because this whole thing, you know, he sits in a location that just makes them susceptible and I want, you know, rather than us try and remedy it through some type of measures related to your property along Telfair Road, you know, getting rid of that building may be the best bet if your business plans allow you guys to move in that direction, so y'all need to stay in touch on that, but on the drainage, we need to get together on that.
Well, we, we feel like the best approach for addressing the drainage is to do that whole area at once.
Yes.
Not piece-milled.
That's correct, you're absolutely right.
So I'm with you a hundred percent on potentially purchasing that property.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would wanna come forward and speak in favor of the motion? You can step back.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would wanna come forward and speak opposed? This time I'm gonna close this public hearing. We will vote on both of these requests on June the fourth, and if it passes unanimously, we could have a second reading, if not, we would have to vote on it at our next council meeting, have a second reading. This time I'd entertain a motion to approve city council minutes dated five seven eighteen and workshop synopsis dated five fourteen eighteen.
Make motion.
Second.
Motion made and second, voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. This time we're going into staff reports. First up is gonna be Director of Planning and Zoning, Ron Alexander.
For the month of April, the planning and zoning, there were seven cases brought before the Planning Commission at the April agenda. There were seventy-five other acts of service put forth by the planning department. The building department issued forty-one permits, did a hundred inspections, did sixty plan reviews, forty meetings, and about twenty hours of in-house training associated with that. As the fire marshal, we did fifty onsite inspections, forty plan reviews, and approximately two hours of in-house training associated with that. Also did two fire investigations for the month. Blood plane management, we did approximately thirty related site inspections and about forty plan reviews associated with those services. And that pretty much concludes the report.
Thank you, Ron. Have any questions for Ron? Thank you. Next up is Director of Public Works and Water Operation, Benny Gooch. Having to remember that water operation that we added to you there.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
On the public works side, we, public works received thirteen residents' requests, it brought us to a hundred and eleven work orders for the month. On our storm drainage, we maintain three thousand four hundred and seventy feet of ditch maintenance, fifty-two miles of canal maintenance, thirty feet of underground utility repairs. In our streets, we spent ten thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cent on street and asphalt repairs, two thousand ninety-eight miles of shoulder maintenance. Street sweepings, we swept a hundred and two miles of our streets. And our signs and, street signs and markings, we had eight that we replaced on our signs. And streetlights, we had one request for a streetlight. And on our water side, seventy-one service orders for the month, forty-one work orders that brought us to a hundred and twelve for the month total. The plant produced twenty-four point nine oh nine million gallons of drinking water a day. Water line services, we had three lateral line repairs, five main line repairs. Our water valve services, we had eighty-seven locate services, fifty-one water cut-ons, seventy reconnects, forty-three cutoffs. On our meters, we had fifteen meters investigated, three meter replacements, a hundred and twenty-four city initiated rereads, one customer request reread. Sewer side, we had thirteen work orders. On the, on our clean outs, we had nine repairs, gravity main services, one inspection, sewer laterals, one blockage cleared, and one, thirteen manhole services. On the fleet maintenance side of it, we fixed and all repaired sixty-five vehicles. It brought us to a total of two hundred and thirty-four for the year. And that completes my report, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Benny. I would just like to give your crew some kudos for the three houses that y'all demolished and hauled off. I was amazed that I went back the next day and all three houses were gone. It was, they were very neatly cleaned up. My only regret was that I didn't ask you to get some time on the machine and let me see how I did.
[laughing]
But y'all did a fantastic job and got it done very quickly, and if we'd have tried to hire a contractor, it would've cost a good bit of money, but y'all really worked fast.
Well, I appreciate that, Scott. Helped out a good bit on that, getting them ready for it.
Well, I'm gonna say something about him in a minute. I say I'm gonna say something when the police, Chief of Police gives his report, but I understand you spent some time on the machines too.
Oh, yeah.
That's probably why it got done so quickly.
I don't know.
Thank you. Council, have any questions?
Benny, our insurance policy doesn't allow the mayor to drive any heavy equipment. Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Benny. Next up is our Chief of Police, Chief Ballard.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I have some of the totals in reference to our work during April. We had approximately a little over two thousand calls for service. We had thirty-two incidents revolving larcenies, which again, we, a lot of those are involving people leaving their vehicles unlocked, and unfortunately, we have individuals that decide to check our vehicles to see if they're unlocked and steal some valuables, so we would just ask that people, we continue to put the word out, please lock your vehicles up there. Most of these are not forced entry, but if you leave your vehicle unlocked, they will take the opportunity. We worked fifty-four accidents the month of April, which is about a steady number we've been dealing with. We, there was a total of eight hundred and nine traffic violations that we cited for, two hundred and fifteen warnings were written. Number one violation, again, always seems to be speeding, everybody's in a hurry to get somewhere. We wrote two hundred and fifty-seven speeding tickets for the month. The municipal court handled five hundred and fifty cases, and five hundred and fourteen were traffic-related, thirty-six were criminal cases. And during that month, we had to arrest sixty-one people for a total of a hundred and forty-one different charges. And we were able to get a lot of training in for the month, we've got over four hundred and forty-two hours of training for all our officers and some of the items of interest where we did start, Scott Robidere accepted the position of Code Enforcement Supervisor, and we actually started that position in April. And Captain Pat, Lieutenant Myers, and Corporal DeS were recognized and attended the twenty-eighteen M.A.T. Awards in the Atlanta area, and we were recognized for our DUI efforts. And we had two officers complete the Crisis Intervention Techniques Training, which is a very valuable course, hard to get. And I'm excited to bear the new Garden City Police Patch that we were able to introduce throughout all our officers during the month. And we also had an opportunity to participate in the Stand Up For America Day Parade in Port Wentworth. And then as far as code enforcement goes, they issued two hundred and twenty-six fifteen-day notices and a hundred and fifty-three cases came into compliance during the month. And I think that concludes the main points.
Thank you. I would like to recognize Scott Robidere, you said he'd been here since April, but it seems like he's been here a long time with all the things that have been going on, so I really seen an improvement there. I think he is doing a great job along with his two other code officers.
Our team, yes, sir.
And I have a lot of comments from residents that they've seen a noticeable change, so I thank him for that. Thank him for all the work that had to be done on the three houses that Benny tore down just to get it to the point that we could get over there, all the paperwork involved with that.
Yes, we're very excited about the three houses, that was a long time coming, it created a criminal element over there that we hope is gonna cease based on clearing out that area, we think it's gonna make a big difference there, hopefully it makes the area a lot more safer than it once was.
So I thank him for that. I was also at Gould Elementary on Friday, handing out some awards. The principal there was very complimentary on your officers, I think they'd been over there for a couple of weeks, maybe helping out in some areas. They were especially complimentary on Officer DeS and his canine partner, the kids loved him.
They loved the dog.
They loved the dog, and that's a, that's a mean-looking dog. But I heard the canine may be putting in his retirement papers soon?
Yes, that's something we'll be talking about in the future in reference to our canine program. We normally have two dogs, we're down to one in areas nearing retirement, and so we need to, you know, communicate and look at getting another canine, one or two onboard, hopefully in the near future.
I think this canine was the same one that was on the rope with me and the police when we defeated the fire department.
Yes, he was involved in the tug-of-war.
At Public Safety Day, that's the same canine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's a, that's a mean-looking dog, but he can be very friendly.
He's a very big dog, very big, big dog, yes.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Fire Department report, our Fire Chief is away. Our fire chief is away at school. We have Assistant Chief Lewis going to give us their report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I have our report for the month of April here on behalf of the Fire Department. Our service calls for the month, we had 187 calls. We're at 743 calls for the year, calls for service. 11 of those this month were for fire incidents. We had 125 first responder calls, 18 vehicle accidents, or vehicle accidents, three hazardous material incidents, three or six service calls, nine good intent calls, and 15 alarm calls that we responded to for the month of April. Folks did an outstanding job in handling those calls. We, as far as training, we had a 341, approximately 341 training hours for the month of April, about 23 per hours per firefighter. We sent four people to Leadership Two and Three Class in Effingham, which was a Georgia Public Safety Training Course that they attended. Chief Maderos and myself attended the Georgia Spring Fire Chiefs Executive Session Conference here in town as well. We sent two of our lieutenants to basic principles and fire inspection class at Georgia Public Safety Training Center Campus in Forsyth, where they will be assisting and able to teach here locally as well as assisting the state with the efforts and the new inspections programs that are coming onboard. We had one firefighter attend for their structural fire control training class for his certification for the year. We also were able to complete our department fit test, which is annual requirement for all of our firefighters to maintain their fit test for their mask as part of their SCB and Ensemble Fire Gear. We were able to completed that. All of our employees were able to get through that. We also conducted our annual Department of Physical, Fitness, physical that comes from, through us to Greenville Physical Company. They come spend two days at our fire station and do a complete physical to make sure all of our fire personnel are physical fit, able to do the job, and also maintains our state requirements for our physical that we're required to meet on an annual basis. We also did have some community relations events that we participated in as we do. Our Tuesdays at the Senior Citizen for Blood Pressure Checks is going very well. It's being very receptive about the community and our fire folks enjoy going over there and conducting those. We also did two fire extinguisher classes. We, one was we were part of Valpak's Safety Day where we were able to teach about 20 of their employees and get their certifications for fire extinguisher class, as well as we went out to the ports to their vehicle facility or to their fleet facility maintenance and taught about 18 of their folks, allowing them to get some manual training for fire extinguisher. We also participated in the Stand Up For America Day Parade and it went very well. That's it for the fire report for the month.
Thank you, Chief Lewis. Anybody have questions for Chief Lewis? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This time, any updates from the city manager?
Yes, the work at the wastewater plants progressing along much better here in the last two weeks. All the biosolids that accumulated in the basin nearest the Bell Filter Press have been cleaned out and that contractor is off-site right now. So the other contractor came in and started putting some of the mechanical equipment in place, did that installation. And I believe we have representatives from the fabricator of that equipment coming in town from Pennsylvania tomorrow to begin to test it and get it all operational such that by the end of this week, that basin would be fully operational in terms of all the biosolids cleaned out and the new aerator device up and running. So.
I had no idea that area was so deep until I went over and saw it emptied.
It's been a real challenge to just coordinate all the work over there, so I want to thank Benny and his staff for what they've done. And hopefully by the end of this week, we're going to have some brand-new equipment over there running, taking care of our wastewater processing business here in the city.
Benny's crews have been having to put in some overtime to supplement the three contractors.
They have been, and they've really helped out a lot where we have maintained our permit compliance through this entire process. And they're a big reason why because they've been out there on the weekend making sure that the process that keeps our wastewater in compliance is all functional 24/7.
We had good cooperation with very little rain.
Yes.
That would have really impacted.
It's been dry for several weeks and that was a gift.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ron? We have no items for consideration. Anyone on council have anything else to bring forward? Hearing nothing, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made and we are adjourned.